Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm David Vitale, President of the Chicago Board of Education. On behalf of my fellow board members, I welcome you to today's Chicago Board of Education meeting. Today is March 26, 2014, and we are holding this month's meeting here at the Board Chamber's 125 South Clark. We will follow our regular order of the agenda today. And so, Madam Secretary, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Mr. President.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The regular meeting of Wednesday, March 26, is hereby called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Benin.
Here.
Dr. Hines.
Here.
Vice President Reese.
Here.
Board Member Quazo.
Here.
Board Member, I'm sorry, Dr. Escotia.
Present.
Board Members App.
Here.
President Vitale.
Here.
Seven members present. There is a quorum. I would also like to recognize our Chief Executive Officer, Dr. Barbara Bird-Bennett, our General Counsel, Mr. James Bubley, our Honorary Student Board Member, Ashley Gordon, and our Shadow Student this month, Jessica Diaz. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. At this time, I would like our Honorary Student Board Member, Ashley Gordon, to introduce our Shadow Student for this month. Ashley?
Thank you, Mr. President. This month, we have Jessica Diaz, a senior from Taft High School. Jessica is a member of the National Honor Society Student Government and Issues to Action Club. She is co-president of the Senior Committee and a close-up Washington DC participant. After graduation, Jessica plans to attend the University of Michigan Ann Arbor or the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign to pursue a degree in psychiatry. And after her goal is to go to medical school and become a neurologist.
Jessica, do you want to say anything?
It is an honor to be attending this board meeting and representing my fellow CPS schoolmates as a Shadow Student. And I would like to start by thanking the members of the board for this opportunity. I would also like to thank my principal at Taft High School, Mrs. Carolyn Round, for her tremendous support. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Jessica's already been admitted to some great schools for college next year and struggling with her choice, but we know whichever one she chooses, she's going to have a great career going forward. And we want to thank you for joining us. You know, I have the opportunity to actually sit down with our students before these meetings and learn a little bit about them. And I was able to squeeze out of Jessica that she actually is a musician. And she made me try to guess what instrument she played. And I failed continuously because Jessica plays the saxophone. All right, Jessica. Nice to have you with us today. So, as usual, we'll start this morning by seeing what great students we have in our system. And we're going to start this morning with a little bit of entertainment from the Hawthorne School. Barbara, would you like to say a couple of words about?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. President Vitale, members of the board, members of the community, I'm really pleased to introduce this group of special young people. I had an opportunity to chat with them before the meeting. And I think that we're all in for an incredible treat from the young people from the Hawthorne Academy, the Angelic Singers. Their teacher is right there. And thank you so very, very much. We're all waiting. Thank you.
Why are there so many songs about rainbows and what's on the other side? Rainbows are visions, but only illusions. And rainbows have nothing to hide. So even tall and soft shoes to believe in, I know they're wrong ways to see. Someday we'll find it, the Rainbow Connection, the thinkers, the dreamers, and me. Who said that every wish would be heard and answered and wished on the morning star? Somebody thought of that, and someone believed it. Look what it's done so far. Love's so amazing that keeps us star-gazing. What do we think we might see? Someday we'll find it, the Rainbow Connection, the thinkers, the dreamers, and me. All of us others now, we know that it's probably magic. Have you been have a sleep? And have you heard voices? I've heard them calling my name. Is this the street sound of all the young sailors? The voice that keep on and the same? I've heard it too many times to ignore it. Something that I'm supposed to be. Someday we'll find it, the Rainbow Connection, the thinkers, the dreamers, and me. La la la, la 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 la. La la la, la 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 la.
Thank you so much for having us. The kids have been very excited. I'm Dee Murphy. I am the K-8 Vocal and General Music Teacher at Hawthorne. Mr. Petrini suggested, would we like to do this? I said, oh, my goodness, what an honor. So, thank you again. This was the Rainbow Connection. The kids asked, could we do this for you? You might have noticed, if you know the song, we changed one word to dreamers and thinkers because that's what education should be about, helping children dream, think, and who knows where we can go from there. Thanks again for having us.
Thank you very, very much for coming this morning. We have a chance to celebrate some winners today, Barbara?
Yes, we do. This morning, we have the privilege of honoring some remarkable Chicago Public Schools students for their achievements in academic competitions. Last Thursday, 7th grader Christine Alex from Whitney Young won the Chicago Citywide Spelling Bee by correctly spelling the word "maraschino." In May, Christine will be headed to Washington DC to represent Chicago Public Schools in the national championship. We're joined this morning by Christine and runner-up in the citywide competition, 6th grader Wassim Rahman. Am I saying that correctly? From Alexander Graham Bell Elementary. Preparation for the Spelling Bee takes incredible discipline, focus, and hard work. And I'm confident that these same skills that led you to excellence in the citywide bee are going to help you not only when you go on to Washington, but will help you succeed in college, in your career, and in life. I congratulate each of you and would like for you to say a few words if you want. Hi.
My name is Christine Alex, and I'm a student at the Whitney Young Academic Center. I would like to thank you for sponsoring my trip to Washington DC to participate in the Scripps National Spelling Bee. It would be an honor to represent CPS at the Nationals. Thank you again.
Welcome. More than welcome.
I know everybody says this, but once again, I'd like to thank everybody who made this Spelling Bee possible. It really is a great honor for me to have placed second in the whole citywide Spelling Bee. You know, I've always kind of been a stickler for spelling and grammar, and now I have something to show for that.
Are those your parents with you? Would you like to say anything to us? We certainly congratulate you and thank you so very much.
Thank you so much for allowing the schools to participate with the Scripps National Spelling Bee because it has allowed, I know it has allowed my daughter to expand her vocabulary. So, I know that it is helpful with her thinking and her communication ability. So, it has really helped her. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I would like to say thank you for giving Wassim the opportunity, and I'm very proud of my son Wassim. I have no fingernails left after the last five. This little girl made me bite all my nails off.
This year, the Academic Decathlon Team from Whitney Young Magnet High School continued its tradition of excellence by winning the city and the state champion academic decathlon competitions. The Whitney Young team has been in the state finals for 26 of the last 27 years. And next month, the Whitney Young team will travel to Honolulu, Hawaii to compete in the national finals. On behalf of the entire Chicago Public School community, congratulations to each of you. I must say, on a personal level, I'm incredibly jealous and wish I were the chaperone for that trip.
That's a nice sight.
And we certainly wish you tremendous luck in the national finals. We're joined today by Coach David Bell and the decathlon team, and I would like to invite the captains of the team to say a few words.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Amanda Zhang.
And I'm Noah Swetis-Sikes.
We are the captains of this year's Academic Decathlon Team at Whitney Young. We would like to thank you guys for hosting this recognition. It's such an honor to be here.
And we wouldn't be here without some very special people that we'd like to give a shout out to. So, Mr. Bell over there, who is our team coach, who has worked tirelessly throughout the year to push us, to work incredibly hard for these competitions, and just get us to every competition on time and as prepared as we possibly can.
Our principal, Dr. Joyce Kenner. For as busy as she is, she's always finding time to cheer us on, to come to competitions, and to motivate us.
Now, Academic Decathlon has really helped us in all areas of life, from schoolwork to colleges. It's helped us aspire to a new tier of high-ranking schools. So, for example, I'm hoping to attend the University of Southern California in Los Angeles.
I'm hoping to attend Columbia University in New York.
And Academic Decathlon has just really helped us so much. And we are really looking forward to representing our school, the public schools of Chicago, and our state at the national competition in Honolulu.
So, thank you again once more. We are very excited to uphold our legacy.
Thank you.
Chicago Public Schools is also proud to be the home of some incredible young chess players in our elementary and our high schools. The chess team from Faraday Elementary tied for second in this year's citywide competition, and four students earned medals for their achievements. Students from the K-8 team will be heading to, again, I wish I could chaperone, to San Diego later this year for the National Elementary School Championship. At the high school level, the team from Whitney Young won this year's IHSA Chess Championship. And today, we're also proud to honor Ryan Tofil from Northside College Prep for placing first for Board Three, and Bobby Blankenship from Marshall High School for placing first for Board Seven. We congratulate you. I understand Mr. Blankenship as well, as representatives from Faraday and Whitney Young. We'll say a few words, and we'll start with Mr. Blankenship.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Bobby Blankenship. I'm currently a student at John Marshall High School. John Marshall High School. I'm proud to say I'm the first medalist from the Faraday-Marshall partnership to win a medal in state. Marshall has been medal-winning at Faraday for several years. I started playing tennis in eighth grade and never thought I'd be a medalist as a junior. Also, I'd like to thank my chess coach, Mr. Oku, my mom for supporting me, my principals, Ms. Johnson, who couldn't be here today, my assistant principal, Ms. Johnson, and my I'd like to thank all y'all for having me today.
I'm Sam Schmichael from Whitney Young High School. We've just won the state title for the third time in four years, so we're very happy about that. I'd like to thank some of the people that made it possible. Here today, we have our coach, Mr. Cash, and assistant coach, Mr. Swan, who without their time commitment, none of this would be possible. I've been lucky enough to know Mr. Cash for six years now, quite a while. And, yeah, he's just been so great and really supportive of all of us. And I'd like to thank Dr. Joyce Kenner, our principal, who, of course, really makes everything all possible for us to go to these various national tournaments and everything. And so, we're going to Nationals once more, and I know that we can, hopefully, we can win this one and make Chicago proud. So, thanks.
My name is Lamari Chows from Michael Faraday Elementary. I'm an 8th grader. I am the captain of our chess team. First of all, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak before you once more. And I would like to thank my chess coach, and especially like to thank my principal, Mr. Pettis, because without him, I would never have been in chess, and I would never have been exposed to all the opportunities that chess allows. Because most of the students, most of my classmates, have never been on an airplane before. And last year, I got to do that when I went to Tennessee, and it was horrifying. But it's an experience that I believe that we should be able to experience. So, I would like to thank my principal for that. And thank you once more for letting me speak.
Can I miss this opportunity to show our sincere appreciation to all those on the board and who are members of CPS, who has afforded Faraday and the Marshall partnership this tremendous opportunity to break outside the walls of our community and to experience the great things that society has afforded us? We had the opportunity, as Lamari alluded to earlier, to go to Nashville, Tennessee. And while we were there, we took advantage of it. We visited Tennessee State University, Pitts University, Mihary, as well as Vanderbilt. And it allowed our students to understand that that can be them. But not only that, it will be them. And it is because of you that our students, I don't know if the mic went off. Oh, we're fine. It's because of you and your belief in us that we have these great opportunities. It is because of you that we have a student that's now attending Whitney Young High School and that is now going to compete in the Nationals this year. And understand this, when they go to the schools that they are attending, they come back. And when they come back, they give our childrens the opportunity to experience what they experience. So, thank you. We ask that you continue to support us, and we will continue to show the fruits of your labor in student achievement, access to colleges, access to careers, access to the world. Thank you.
I was not scheduled to say anything. My name is Andrea Box, and I am a champion in the war of John Marshall High School on all levels. I have been a chess mom. I don't have any children of my own, but I have raised thousands of children. And since Mr. Oku chooses not to step to the mic, but Faraday would not be here without Mr. Oku, he's standing over here in the background. He's an humble man. And we need to acknowledge this man. He's a great man. And he's harrowing, and he's doing all kinds of wonderful things for our children in the community. Please stop. And you need to say something. They wouldn't be here without him.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Joseph Okol. I'm a chess coach and a math teacher at Marshall. 2005, one of my students was shot dead. And I thought of starting a program after school where we can have the kids in school after school, especially during the most dangerous period between 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. And I was told that's the most dangerous period for kids to be outside the school building. So, I started the chess program in 2005, and there were only about eight kids who came because most of them wanted to play basketball, wanted to play football. And to make a long story short, the group grew to 60, and I decided to expand it in a way that we could also offer the chess program to Faraday. And so, we had the chess program at Faraday about five years ago, and the first time ever, they had a chess club. And my intention was not really for them to win medals. It's something like to save lives and to be able to make a difference in the lives of these kids. And I didn't expect that somehow they would excel. And I didn't expect that they can do things beyond my expectations. So, I want to thank my principal, Ms. Johnson, who supported me, Mr. Pettis, who also supported me in the program. And without them, we would not have made it. And of course, to you, to everybody who made it possible for us. And thank you very much.
Thank you, President Vitale, and members of the board, for providing this opportunity for the CEO's report. Last school year, Chicago Public Schools had space for 511,000 students, but we had 403,000 students actually enrolled in our schools. Half of our schools were underutilized, and nearly 140 were more than half-empty. This meant that the resources across the district were spread too thinly and were not being used in the best interest of our students, our schools, and our communities. CPS was spending money on half-empty buildings instead of redirecting those limited resources to ensure high-quality education for students in every neighborhood. As a result of this crisis, I engaged our legislative leaders in Springfield to seek an extension for our SB 30 timeline so that we would have the time necessary to engage parents and community around proposed consolidations. Our Springfield leaders expressed concern for transitioning students with IEPs as well as for students in transitional living situations. My team and I committed that our transition efforts would ensure that the needs of these students would be met through a process. Based on this commitment, our leaders in Springfield approved an SB 630 timeline extension that allowed CPS to take a thoughtful and deliberative approach to school consolidations process. The first step I took in the consolidation process was to focus community and parents through an engagement process and the creation of the Commission on School Utilization. The Commission engaged in a dialogue around the impact of the potential consolidations and the impact that a more efficiently-run school district would have on students and communities. The Commission held several meetings throughout the city to engage residents in this dialogue and to engage CPS staff regarding the district's capacity to efficiently and effectively implement school consolidations. The Commission's final report stated that school consolidations were justified if students were moved into a better educational environment. In addition, the Commission recommended that no high schools be closed, and a recommendation that we fully embraced. Further, the Commission identified that CPS could implement 80 school consolidations and recommended that CPS make the necessary investments to effectively implement the consolidations. In March 2013, I issued my initial school consolidation recommendations to the board that were made by the Commission Utilization and took their recommendations into account. The initial recommendations led CPS staff to engage in another round of community dialogue that took place over an almost two-month period, with two community meetings and one public hearing at each of the proposed actions. May 2013, I took the community feedback into account and modified my recommendations to this Board of Education. As a result, the board approved the proposal for 49 underutilized elementary and one high school program and co-locate 11 other schools. This action allowed Chicago Public Schools not only to offer students opportunities to enroll in higher-performing schools, but it also fulfilled the Commission's recommendation and saved the district about $41 million in annual operating expenses. In the first year, these savings were reinvested into our welcoming schools across the city of Chicago in order to create a quality 21st-century education environment for every child. The Board of Education's decision to consolidate underutilized schools was informed by a comprehensive and coordinated community engagement process that allowed more than 34,000 members of the school community to provide feedback. In taking action last year, we made promises to students, families, and school communities. We promised to provide safe and seamless transition for students whose schools were being consolidated. We promised to invest in welcoming schools and to ensure every child would have the resources and supports they need to successfully academically reach their potential inside and outside of the classroom. And we promised that our approach to the transition would be thoughtful, deliberative, collaborative, and transparent. Today, we are releasing a mid-year report that outlines both the investments we made as a district and the mid-year outcomes for students resulting in those investments. The report illustrates clearly that we have kept our promises, and we have upheld our commitments to our students and school communities. We delivered on the commitment to invest $155 million in welcoming schools to provide resources for students, teachers, principals, and staff. We delivered on our commitment to invest in libraries at welcoming schools. We delivered on our commitment to ensure that every classroom in the welcoming schools has air conditioning. We delivered on the commitment to ensure that every welcoming school student in grade through 8 has access to a laptop or iPad. And we invested in 21st-century technologies, upgraded informational technology infrastructure, and created new science, computer, engineering, and media labs for students at those schools. In addition to the $155 million we used to upgrade our school buildings, we invested $78 million in programmatic enhancements. The resources allowed us to create 10 new STEM programs, six new IB programs, and a new fine arts program for students. These investments also allowed us to implement evidence-based social-emotional learning strategies and provided extra levels of support for diverse learners, English-language learners, and students in transitional living conditions. And our investments allowed for a focused approach to cultural integration efforts and brought our parents and school communities together in productive, meaningful ways leading up to the first day of school. leading up to the first day of school. As a result, students from close and welcoming schools had several opportunities to meet each other and their teachers prior to the start of the school year so that they would be prepared for a productive start of school day one. We also made significant unprecedented investments to upgrade and expand the safety and security infrastructure for our students. As a result, every welcoming school has Safe Passage. We hired an additional 600 Safe Passage workers representing 18 different community organizations to provide secure routes for students to and from school each day. We upgraded security technologies within schools, and we've continued to work in close collaboration with our partners in the Chicago Police Department and other sister agencies to create and to sustain safe school communities. The result of a relentless focus on student safety is evident. In spite of some of the dire predictions, there's not been a single incident along Safe Passage route this year. In fact, our Safe Passage partnership with the Chicago Police Department and other city agencies has resulted in a 12% reduction in crimes reported within a quarter of a mile radius of welcoming schools. With the encouraging engagement and support from parents in the community, we look forward to the continued success of this all-hands-on-deck effort through safety for the remainder of the year. Our comprehensive, coordinated approach to the transition is proving that it is effective as our mid-year data trends are showing that students impacted by the consolidations are experiencing academic gains. This holds true across for all demographic groups, including students with IEPs and those in transitional living situations. Those are the two groups of students we paid considerable attention to throughout the process. Through this focused effort on these two groups of students, we met our commitment to the legislative leadership in Springfield. Our mid-year data shows that students impacted by school consolidations have a 50% higher rate of attendance this school year when compared to the same time last year. More students are in school every day where they belong and where we're able to educate them. Grade point averages in core subjects, including English, mathematics, reading, and science, are up for students in the impacted schools based on consolidations. Among students impacted, the percentage of students in grades 3 through 8 who are on track to graduate has increased. Additionally, students whose schools were closed last year have a decreased rate of misconduct for the same reporting period. These mid-year results are contrary to the predictions, the dire predictions that so many made as we went through the community dialogue in winter and spring of 2014. Much was said last year about the potential adverse effects that the consolidating underutilized schools would have on our students. None of the negative predictions have come true. In fact, the opposite has happened. Students are doing better academically, and rates of crime and violent incidents have decreased. Results like these don't happen by coincidence. These results are based on strategic, thoughtful, coordinated approach that we've taken to managing this process. The members of our team have spent hours, days, more than we can consider, to ensure these successes would happen. As a result of the consolidations, we're stronger today than we were before and we're better positioned today to deliver the resources that support all of Chicago's next generation of children. Moving forward, we will continue to track the progress and report back to this board and the community. I am confident today that based on the empirical results of our mid-year analysis and what I've seen and heard in schools throughout the year as I visit, that our approach to the transition process has proven effective, and it was in the best interest of the students and families that we serve. And I'll stop here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Barb. Any questions for Barb? So, Barb, this is a report which you've provided to us. Is that report going to be made public or some elements of it?
Yes, sir.
Jesse?
Will there be, and I appreciate the good news and the report, will this be an ongoing look that we're going to continue to kind of keep an eye on how these students are doing?
Yes, I think that it's very important that we come to you with this mid-year report, but I think equally important that we come with an end-of-year report, and I would argue for the subsequent year that we track this data over at least a three-year period.
Exactly what I was hoping to hear. Thank you.
Other questions for Barb on this? Thank you very, very much for the update, and congratulations to you and the team on frankly incredible success to date. And we look forward to it continuing. Really appreciate that. You want to go on with your report, Barb?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. A number of our speakers this morning have signed up to speak about ISAT testing. And as such, I'd like to take a moment just to put some of the facts on the record. Despite claims to the contrary, administration of the ISAT test this year was not optional. State and federal law require that the ISAT be given according to the protocol outlined by the Illinois State Board of Education. In more than 99% of the ISAT testing situations across the district this school year, CPS staff conducted themselves with the professionalism that we expect, and the test was administered according to the ISB protocol. However, we are obliged to investigate the allegations of staff misconduct around ISAT testing in a handful of situations. As such, recent conversations have taken place at some schools in response to complaints and allegations of inappropriate conduct on the part of CPS employees related to the administration of ISAT. Our interviews are winding down and concluding. And after consultation with legal, I will bring forth findings and a recommendation for this board to consider.
Thanks, Barb. Questions for Barbara?
My question's actually not about ISAT. I just want to go back to the consolidation report. Would it be also possible, Barbara, if we can get an update when we do the year-end or the next review on the special programs that have been put in the schools? So, the STEM programs, the IB program, how the students are using the iPads that we've invested in? So, sorry, I meant to ask you that before. Thanks.
We will, absolutely.
Other questions for Barb?
And finally, I'll now move to our proposed amendment to the volunteer policy that is on the board's agenda for today. At the center of our district action plan is the need for engaged, empowered families and communities. Students thrive when their families and community partners work together to support their success. And to make it easier for more members of the community to be involved in the success of the next generation of Chicago's children, I'm proposing an amendment to the current volunteer policy. And for an overview of the proposed amendment, I'd like to introduce Chicago Public Schools Chief for Family and Community Engagement, Officer Philip Hampton, who will provide an overview of the proposed policy amendment. Philip?
Thank you. Let's make sure we got, okay, there we are. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, President Vitale and board members. I'd like to give you a brief overview of our proposed volunteer policy. It is the core priority of the district to support the engagement and empowerment of families and communities. As a core value of Pillar 3, parents must be empowered as leaders and that schools in the district must be resourceful in identifying partners who can support student growth and learning. School volunteers are critical to Pillar 3. CPS seeks to provide opportunities to parents and community through our volunteer program. And we feel that the current policy in practice is somewhat restrictive, and that's why we are here today. We are recommending a change to our current policy to increase access to interested volunteers, in particular to parents and also non-parents, while also providing the necessary safeguards for students and staff. Recommended policy changes. Our current policy requires that all volunteers that serve over five hours a week must go through fingerprinting. What we are recommending today is that we have a tiered approach. Fingerprinting will take place for Level 1 volunteers. Those are described as following. Chaperoning overnight, school-sponsored trips. Number 2, any volunteer who has regular and direct contact with children. And in terms of our commitment, we are requiring or we are recommending that parents that provide over 10 hours of service in a school will be required for the background checks. And then also, for volunteers who provide over five hours of service. Coaches and assistant coaches, which is also required per CPS High School Athletic Association bylaws. Student teachers and pre-service teachers. One-on-one tutors and mentors. And anyone who serves for a volunteer activity where there will be ongoing individualized interaction with students. Now, for our Level 2 volunteers, and this is where we believe our recommendation will support better access and opportunities for parents. Incidental volunteers with no ongoing individualized interaction with students. Anyone who volunteers less than the required 10 hours or five hours per week will not be required for fingerprinting. Examples of such activities include judges for academic competitions, those that participate in principal-for-day activities, folks who volunteer for career-day activities, and also speakers at the various school assemblies. Parents and guardians who accompany his or her children to class on one-day field trips or any other type of in-school activity that doesn't require an overnight stay will not be required for fingerprinting. Number 3, local school council members who have completed a background check as part of the LSC requirements will not be required. Number 4, volunteers working on projects and activities which involve little or minimal contact with children. And number 5, CPS employees who volunteer and who are required to have a background check as a part of their employment as well. This new proposed policy will lead to some improvements in our practice. Number 1, CPS will utilize our parent support center, our call center, to address all questions or concerns relative to the volunteer program. Number 2, we will develop a volunteer data management system or simply a database which will allow us to know who's volunteering, and it will also give us the opportunity to provide an immediate status to their application. What we didn't include here, and I would like to mention, is that it will also provide improved customer service. By the Office of Family and Community Engagement leading this effort, it will provide an opportunity for better alignment with our Talent Office, our Office of Network Support, and also communications. And finally, I'd like to mention, in terms of the Talent Office, as we continue to prepare for this recommended change, which we recommend will take place at the beginning of the 2014 and '15 school year, we will be planning to have flexible opportunities for all of our volunteers to have fingerprinting services provided in the community. And we'll work with the Office of Network Support, the chiefs and the principals in order to determine the most appropriate places for that. But we believe that that will provide an opportunity for more parents who have extremely busy schedules and also non-parents that support our schools. It will give them a chance to expedite the process. Now, I can take any questions that you may have.
Mr. President, I have a comment and a question. Thank you. Thank you, Phil, because I think this is an enhancement. Homeschool connection is critical for a student's success, and this will help with this. You know, school is the second home, and your home is the first school. So, this will consolidate that. But I have two questions. Number 1, have we decreased the length of time where we have to wait for background checks? And how is the immigration status of families impacted by this policy, or is it in any way?
The first question. We will not increase the amount of time that it takes to go through the fingerprinting process. I've been assured that with Talent. That's one of the reasons we mentioned. We think part of the issue is that the process hasn't been aligned or led by one office. And individuals in the past have called Talent. They've called the Office of Partnerships. They've called my office to inquire where they are in the system. By face and our parent support centers beginning that process, it will move everything along quicker. And also, we think by having the opportunity to provide the actual services out in the community, that will help expedite the process as well. Your second question, relative to undocumented individuals.
Correct.
We've given considerable consideration to that. All we will be asking is that they provide the kind of identification that they currently provide, and nothing else will be required.
Thank you.
Other questions for Phil? Thank you very, very much, Phil.
Thank you.
Barbara, do you have anything else?
No, that concludes my report, Mr. President and members of the board.
Thanks. Any questions for Barb before we move on? Okay. Thank you very much.